I know that you guys have missed that song. I know that I have. Welcome, welcome, welcome. Good morning, good morning. I see you, Tish. Good morning. Good morning, Charlie. Good morning, Dee, Santrell, Jackie. Let me know who's with us on this morning, guys. It has been an interesting two weeks. So I've been out of town the last couple of weeks and I have indeed missed you. Welcome Christina, welcome, welcome, welcome. Hey Joyce, thank you for joining the broadcast. You guys make sure that you are liking and sharing. We are going to have an important conversation and you know how we doing unfiltered. Good morning, good morning, James, Tony. We, I asked the questions, but y'all get to ask the questions too and we will put them right on the screen. So this candidate better be ready, ready. Welcome Adrian, welcome to the broadcast. Welcome mom. Okay, so listen, I've been thinking about this and plus I missed blessing you guys. You guys know how we do on this show. We say be blessed and stay woke. We give away cold heart cash every single episode to a lucky person who is a member of the broadcast because it is my call to given this season. Today is going to be no different and I'm actually gonna go ahead and ask our guest, hey gifty, to send me a number one through 100 via text message because that's gonna be the winner today. So Mr. Carter, go ahead and text me that number now that I'm thinking about it. So I've been thinking about this. I woke up today and I thought about the fact that y'all, we are the gatekeepers and it doesn't matter if you are joining us from Texas or if you're joining us from outside of Atlanta, like I live outside of Atlanta, what happens there? We have some of the same issues. Thank you, Lee, for joining us. We have some of the same issues locally happening in Texas or in Chicago or Los Angeles as we have going on in Atlanta. But here's the deal, y'all. We are the gatekeepers. What do I mean by that? We get to decide who walks up those stairs to City Hall and goes through that door and sits in that seat and makes those decisions. So it's important that we engage the process. I don't care where you are. I don't care who you are. I don't care where you live. You have to ask the right questions because half of the time we don't even know what's going on. So that's what we're gonna do today and that's why we're here today. We're going to engage the process and y'all have heard me say this before. I'm not a Democrat. I'm not a Republican and I'm happy this is a nonpartisan race supposedly because when we put ourselves in boxes, what does it do? It causes us not to think because we wanna label ourselves as this way or we wanna identify with this group or that group and then we stop thinking for ourselves. We stop asking questions that identify with our core values or they're really at the heart of change in our lives. We ain't gonna do that today, y'all. Today, we bout to get a little bit unfiltered. So with that being said, please, hey Avril, I see you guys. I see you guys. Please help me welcome to the show today. Thank you, Jamie, for joining us. We got a lot of folks from Atlanta hopping on today. Thank you, guys. Listen, please help me welcome to the broadcast. None other than a candidate for city council in Atlanta. He is not a veteran politician, which I think many of us in this season will find refreshing. So he's not a veteran politician, but he is a native of the area that he lives in and he has a lot to say about a lot of things. I know that he's well versed in housing, but I'm curious as to his answers to some of the questions you guys have already been sending me. So please help me welcome to the broadcast. None other than Mr. Larry Carter II. Welcome to the broadcast.
Thank you. Thank you so much and thank you for giving me the time and the space to be here. I appreciate everybody who showed up this morning and I appreciate you most of all for creating this platform to have an unfiltered conversation.
Okay, awesome. Thank you so much. And with that being said, we're going to jump right into it and Christina saying welcome. Y'all are, y'all are wonderful folks. So listen, we're gonna jump right into it. Um, so you're, you're, you're not a veteran politician, right?
No.
You're not, um, you're not, you're not the typical guy who'd be like, you know, hey, you know, I, I think I'm gonna be a politician today. Like I, I think I'm gonna run for office. I'm not, I, I get the sense that wasn't your lifelong dream and that at some point, you know, I, I even understand from some, some people in the background that you might even be an R and B artist. In addition to the professional job that you maintain, yeah, I'm gonna get you on that one too. Different. So the question becomes, why did you throw your hat in the race? I mean, why?
And thank you for the question. That's a great question. So I have been a community organizer. I started in like 2009. I was living in Ashwood Heights, which is right next to the AUC Center, which the Atlanta University Center for People Who Are Not Here in Atlanta. And when I moved in, like I bought my house for $10,000 in, in 2009, a five bedroom, three bath house. And I was just like, why is this real estate so undervalued? And then when I moved in and started talking to people, I learned more and more how people have been disenfranchised in the area, didn't feel like people respected them or heard their voices. So that pushed me forward to kinda create a space where their voices were heard. And then I became vice chair of Atlanta Neighborhood Planning Unit T, which is kinda like a liaison between city council and the citizens and just working in, in that vein of really energizing and giving community a voice. And that, uh, people have asked me to run in the past and I just was very hesitant because you know, I, a friend of mine said, you know, I don't think you're set up for this because uh, they can play dirty. And the thing is, no matter who's playing dirty, like you just said earlier, you have to stick with your core values. And that's what I always cling to is my core values. You know, the son of a single mother. My grandfather was a Baptist minister and I think about all of those things that I've been taught throughout my life and I bring them to the table as being someone new, someone fresh. I have different ideas. I was an educator in Atlanta Public Schools. So I've dealt with families on the front lines, seeing the things they're facing and the challenges that our communities are facing right now.
Okay, that's good. That's good stuff. I love the giving the people a voice part in particular. Y'all see, I got my Better Republic shirt on today because what is a republic? A republic is about power to the people and I'm hearing my, our friend Wally Davis in the background saying, power to the who? To the people. And so let me jump into it and ask you this question because, and, and I'm gonna get to you as well. I believe that's Ms. Nixon. Um, crime. It is all over the front page and I sent my best friend, Dr. Tiffany Mitchell, who lives in the West End. I sent her a text message and say, hey, do you have any questions for, you know, city council candidate Larry Carter? And she said, yes. She said, and I'm gonna read it to you how she wrote it. Okay. One of her, her main concern had to do with crime and in particular by young people that's happening in the West End, which is the area that you're running for. She said, I want to know, on August the 7th at 3:38 AM, my car was broken into and they stole my daughter's toys and DVDs were taken, it's just the principal, by four teens. Okay. She said they appeared to be from R I N D service. I don't know what that means. Now she said while her car is not unique, the break-ins have been happening and they continue to happen. So what's gonna be done about that? But then I also talked to another one of my sister who lives in another part of Atlanta and she's concerned because she don't wanna go to Piedmont Park. Why? Because a woman was stabbed in Piedmont Park just recently. I wanna say about four or five days ago. So she's like, can we not even go to the park? And I'm throwing all this out because it goes back to the vein of the same issue. And then we have Buckhead. Buckhead is one of the wealthy areas of Atlanta. For those of you who don't know, they trying to lead a union, y'all. They're like, we don't wanna be a part of Atlanta anymore. We want our own police department. I can tell you that myself and Dr. Flukas went shopping during Christmas and we were like at Lenox Mall during the daytime and it was great. As the sun started to set, we noticed and I'm just gonna say it like it is, all the white people left. And then the police officers came with dogs and guns and looked like a military operation was going on at Lenox Mall. And, and Dr. K, you can go ahead and put it in the comments because she was there and we all of a sudden felt afraid to be at Lenox. Why shouldn't we go to Dunwoody and shop at perimeter? You know, why, why should we be doing weird like that? So talk to me a little bit about this crime wave that's happening in Atlanta and what are your plans to do something about it? And Trina just said there was a complete shift in the atmosphere.
Definitely. So thank you for that question. As a survivor of gun violence myself, I know the importance. I never want another family to get a call like my mother got about me and my sister being shot. So I take it very, very seriously. First, when addressing the youth and the crime with youth, really, what I'll say about our, our community is this. When I was 16, I worked at Boston Market. I wasn't competing with my mother for a job at Boston Market. I wasn't competing with other adults. Here in our community, we have children who are competing with adults for employment and opportunities. Forty percent of the people in our district do not have access to transportation. They don't have personal cars. So they have to use public transportation to get back and forth to work. So when we think about, when you take all the opportunities away from people, they start to create their own opportunities to survive. And that's what it's about, a survival mechanism. So what I think we need to do is one, expand the at promise centers that the mayor has opened. We have four locations around the city. I think we definitely need more at promise centers. When minors are arrested, police will take them to the at promise centers and they'll get services and training and different opportunities there. However, people don't even know what that is, you know, so they don't, they don't notice in their children there. So what we have to do also is create an engagement and education around what the city has to offer. Because what happens with services is if you don't use them, the funding is taken away. So it's not that the program didn't work. It's that nobody knows it's there. So they don't use it. So we really have to engage our citizens around what's available. And then two, creating, really feeding into programs that deal with our youth. We have, um, raising expectations is one of the nonprofits that have been started. They're operating out of Family First over on Joseph E. Lowery, which they have a STEM background and they really give the kids opportunities for growth and opportunities to learn skills that will be employable skills. We have to take our youth and invest in them. It's, it's cheaper to invest in our youth on the front end than to try to do remediation on the back end. Uh, when we talk about Lenox Mall and Buckhead, that's a, a very interesting thing. This isn't the first time that Buckhead has tried to become a city. Buckhead cityhood has been something that's been swirling around for a while now. I don't think it's a good idea. I don't think it's practical to break off and become another city. What I really think we need to do is start working collaboratively and really using our resources to the fullest. You know, we have the PAD program, which is a diversion program that went citywide June 21st. You call 311 if you see somebody with mental illness. You see somebody abusing drugs. You see somebody experiencing homelessness. You call 311 and PAD comes out, a counselor come out, get the person a meal, they get them sheltered, they get them wraparound services. And I mentioned that during this because instead of calling 911 and having a person with a gun show up when it's a mental health issue, let's go ahead and use the service that's there to get them the services and help that they need. So our police can be on the street, you know, patrolling and having a presence more so, if that makes sense.
It does. That was actually excellent. Let me say this, um, because you brought up a couple of good points. I didn't even know about that, the whole dial 311, because my husband and I were having a conversation last night about mental health issues and are we training the police on mental health issues and things like that? So being able to call 311 to get someone's services as opposed to get them arrested is a great idea. When you talked about the Buckhead issue though, what, what came to mind to me were a couple of things that I'm gonna ask you about this. A lot of us have always felt like Buckhead had a lot of police and a lot of resources had been diverted to protect the people of Buckhead from a patrolling standpoint. And then when you come back to areas like the West End and Adamsville and other places like that, the police were there to police. There's a difference between patrolling and policing. So they were protecting and serving in one area and policing in another area. So when I hear Buckhead talking about how they don't have enough protection, that's not the perspective from a lot of other areas in town. But second of all, you're talking about taking, cutting the middle out of a city so that you can become your own city. So everything around Buckhead is Atlanta except for Buckhead. You're right. It makes no sense, but it does bring up the point about what are we gonna do about violence? We have a defund the police movement going right now because policing ain't working. There's even a shortage of police right now. What are your thoughts on defunding the police even though we're in the middle of a crime, crime wave? But also what you gonna, how do you, how do you do something about the police shortage? What do you do about that?
Um, so I, I definitely would not defund the police. We need police officers. That's, that's who most people turn to when something goes wrong is the police. I am the son of a 33 year retiree from working with the police. My mother was an 911 dispatcher for 33 years in the city of Norfolk, Virginia. And, um, there is a line that, that we definitely have created in the same, it's like this us against them type of mentality that is out there. However, there are police officers who are part of the community, who do serve, who do show up to work, to really look out. And I've had conversations with them, several different officers since I've been running and before. And I think the idea of really streamlining where we're spending our money is more important than defunding the police, like investing in the PAD program. They asked for one, they asked for $3 million for their budget. They got 1.5 million instead. So they only work from 7 AM to 7 PM instead of 24 hours. Really funding sources. When we talk about criminal justice reform, really bringing back a community court. You, you've worked with Professor Winfield Ward Murray. He, he was a part of community court when it first started, really using those tools to get recidivism down. Um, you know, it's 30%. Recidivism dropped 30% when community court first started in here in Atlanta, but we haven't been funding it. If you look at places like Red Hook in New York, that's what our, our system was based after and they're thriving. They're thriving. You know, it's one judge that sees everyone, they see about 3,000 courts a year for nonviolent crimes or petty like shoplifting and, uh, you know, small crimes that, and then like the kids that are doing the crimes in West End right now. Instead of them getting penalty fees, they get hours of community service to do some restorative justice in the communities that they've harmed. So also giving them an opportunity to learn from the community that they've harmed. So now they see it, uh, more as people instead of a way to survive, if that makes sense.
It does. I like that word restorative justice. I need somebody type that in the chat. And Charlie brought up a good point. Mental health is not a crime and, and that's important, but poverty has been made to look like a crime. Let me tell you why. I was looking at the criminalization of poverty because I was looking at a, a map of the supposed worst areas in Atlanta and the West End ended up being one of them, which I think is interesting since those $15,000 houses are now worth 300, but that's a whole nother conversation. So because they're looking at your income, right? And a racial makeup and deciding that this area is a bad area. So when do we start criminalizing that? And, and how do you change the narrative on that? Because it's, it's kind of this propaganda. So what is that about? What's behind the scenes? What's happening on that?
So one, I represent decriminalizing poverty across the board because it's, it's just not fair. Um, you're criminalizing someone who don't have access to opportunities, doesn't have access to adequate education and, and you wanna make them a criminal instead of investing in those communities. One thing I'll say about the data, because I work for the Census Bureau, so I understand how data works. What people fail to realize about this area is that we have Morehouse, Spellman, Clark, Morse Brown, all of those colleges have thousands of students who are counted when we talk about median income. So how much money do you think college students make right now? So you could have people who make hundreds of thousands of dollars, but you have 9,000 students who make about $10,000 a year and then you factor that out. Um, so, so we're not really looking at data. We're looking at data points instead of really diving into the data and understanding. Um, you know, and I'll tell you, you know, on my street in 2015, the highest sale was maybe 150. Uh, currently on my street, there's a, a house under contract for 630. So within six years, you've seen a shift of hundreds of thousands of dollars. So the data definitely is skewed when people, I saw that same map and I was outraged. I posted it on Twitter and just was like, who wrote this? Because this is inflammatory information. Totally. You know nothing about the communities and it shows because you base worse communities off of, like you said, income. And that has nothing to do with the community, the culture that's here, the, the access to different types of food. You know, we have to Sealy's, you know, now we have the breweries here. Um, so to, a lot of the things, it was very disingenuous and, and disappointing whoever wrote that article, the lack of information that they had about the area and the growth that's actually happened here.
Um, it's interesting though, but you know that there's always an agenda because the thing about data is that you can make it look the way you want. One person can take the same piece of information and skew the argument towards whatever the end objective is. And yes, Nora, he did say from 150,000 to now 600,000, which gets to my next question, the Belt Line is running right through the West End. For those of you who, who don't know, the Belt Line is this major project. It's like this park running around the whole city with, you know, this, this big street or corridor where people can ride and bike and there are restaurants along it and things like that. And it has increased property values because people want to live near the Belt Line because you're gonna be able to get everywhere from the Belt Line. To me, it reminds me of kind of the golf cart paths in Peachtree City, right? You know, people want to be able to have access to that. And so you have it running through all these neighborhoods, right? But now those same neighborhoods, who years ago you could get a house for 150,000, it's now worth 600,000. And you just told me the income in that area is significantly less than the income of Atlanta overall. Who's going to be able, one, to afford to move there? But then secondly, who's gonna be able to afford to stay there? So I wanna talk about the impact that this rise in the value of property is having on people who live in that area and, and this is the area that you're running for. So of course this has to be, and you live there. So this has to be an issue, you know, that you've already thought about how to address. How do you address that? Because I gotta imagine that people have already been displaced because they can't afford the taxes.
And, and so as Atlanta grows, I feel like no one should be left behind. I, I think there's development is necessary. I think we need services in this area, but at the same time as we grow, we have to offset that by thinking forward. Um, so when we think about places like Seattle, we think about Austin, Texas, Silicon Valley, San Francisco, those are all places that became tech hubs and grew to be unaffordable for a lot of people. Um, people experiencing homelessness, the population grew and that is where Atlanta is headed right now. I'm not sure if, um, people see all the things that are happening linked them together. You know, Airbnb is relocating here. Twitter is expanding in Palm City Market. Google expanded from five floors to 19 in Midtown. Um, Microsoft bought 90 acres in Grove Park, 42 acres by the airport. Atlanta is on its way to being a tech hub as we speak right now. So what we have to do is look forward when it comes to the growth in property taxes. Uh, that's one of the things that Atlanta does that is interesting. So your tax based off of assessment opposed to your purchase price, where everybody knows when you buy a house, you buy a house based on what you can afford. Um, you don't buy a house based on what the market is doing. And that's how we need to look at our property taxes is basing it on what people can afford. So people who bought in 2016 for $150,000, now you're expecting them to be taxed based off of the growth that's happened at $600,000. People's income doesn't grow that fast. So what I propose is looking at Muskegon County, uh, you know, around South Georgia, mid Georgia, they have a tax freeze where it's based off of your purchase price. Your, your taxes are, your tax based off of what you bought your house for, for, and it stays frozen there until you sell it. And the next person who buys, it'll be frozen at that price. They did that basically because of the rising cost, just like we're seeing now. Um, you know, when, when you think about taxes fluctuating in that way, it's almost like creating an adjustable mortgage because your taxes are rolled into your mortgage. So if your taxes go up by $1,200, that's a extra hundred dollars a month. And when you're talking about families, they just don't have an extra hundred dollars to pull out the air or 200, uh, because my neighbor can afford that. So that's not fair to the families who have done the sweat equity, who've been here through the transitions that we've seen. So that's not fair to the families who have done the sweat equity, who've been here through the transitions that we've seen. So I, I will be proposing that and pushing for the state to give us that same opportunity that Muskegon County enjoys right now. And when we talk about affordability, we have to really look at it, uh, with two strategies. Uh, there is a place-based strategy and then there is a, uh, people-based strategy. And looking at the areas, kind of like this one, who is at a point where, you know, it's unaffordable for the average person. We still have infield lots. Uh, a block right behind the West End Library, there's about an acre and a half of land that's owned by Atlanta Public Schools that is vacant. So we have houses on this street selling for six hundred thirty thousand dollars while there's an acre of land that could be built on with affordable housing to infill with families right now. That's vacant. That's owned by the school board. So I really think we need to, uh, work with the school board as well as the city and leverage our land to build affordable housing infill where there is a need. We also need to increase density. Density is what's gonna keep things affordable. We have West End Train Station. That is a great opportunity right there. It has two parking lots on both sides. So I propose building up, build over the parking lots, uh, with retail at the bottom and have affordable housing over it. So now people who don't have vehicles have access to transportation to get, uh, you know, good paying jobs, have access to get to those while also being able to get groceries and everything else and live in a community that they're familiar with. They might've grown up here. I mean, we have, uh, houses, one on my street, there's three generations that live in a house. So when you're thinking about those things, uh, we really have to make sure that we are keeping the families safe while also creating opportunities for people to move in. And I know I've, I've gone long, but I have one more thing because we have the AUC here. Right now, Clark, Morehouse and Spelman have no more housing available. And the housing around the AUC is unaffordable. I talked to a student yesterday. Um, and she was like, luckily I had a car because I have to go and live in like Jonesboro because that's where I can afford and drive into campus every day. So those are things we have to think about as the city grows and make sure we're protecting our most vulnerable populations, our seniors, um, our people who are experiencing homelessness as well as our students. I think, are you muted?
Yeah, I'm on you. You said something super important and I want to highlight what, what Freedom by Design said. Freedom by Design said innovative thinking. I like it. Uh, because you're talking about things that it, it's common sense, but most people don't think about it, right? The concept of building up, the concept of using all this, the city has so much land that there's nothing being done with. It's not even funny, right? Um, I believe that you said something I hadn't heard before and I hadn't thought about the impact. And I want everyone here on Unfiltered to really consider this. What happens when these historically black colleges and universities, these students have nowhere to live? I want y'all to marinate on that. Like what happens when they have nowhere to live? Because the promise for affordable housing has not been kept by the city of Atlanta. I remember seeing all the news articles about how, oh, we promised we're gonna carve this out and we're gonna have affordable housing and we're gonna do this and we're gonna do that. None of it came to pass. None of it came to pass. So the question becomes, we've heard this before. We ain't heard some of these ideas before, but we've heard before, oh, we're gonna protect the people. We're gonna put this at the forefront. What makes you different? How we know you gonna do what we told you to do?
What makes me different is, um, I have stake in the game because I live here. I want to raise my family here. Um, and as an educator, as a former educator, I don't want to send my kid to private school. I don't want to have to bust them across town. Uh, because whatever the case is, I feel like we have to build from inside out. Um, and, and when I look at it, it's just a promise. I had the opportunity in this community and I want to make sure that those opportunities are viable for people who are in kindergarten right now. What you have to think about is we are building tomorrow, not just for us, but for the generations that follow us. Our children are depending on us to create a world where they can thrive. And I, 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 I think about the freedom fighters who fought before me so that I can have opportunities and walk through doors uh, that they weren't able to walk through. And that's why I'm here to fight for the next generation to make sure they can walk through doors that I don't have access to. Or doors I might have access to, I'm gonna make sure I take the hinges off so they can walk through easily.
Amen. Okay. So we're gonna switch focus real quick and then I gotta put up some of the other questions we're getting. And I had somebody text me a question because they're on, but can't seem to chat. That's always their issue. But listen, Martin, listen, um, here's my question. We have a health crisis going on right now. What is your position on mask mandates? The city of Atlanta recently reinstituted the mask mandate. What is your position on mask mandates?
So I think it is important to wear a mask, keep yourself safe and keep others safe. Uh, what we're learning is this, uh, COVID is just a virus and they, they, they mutate. They're trying to survive, just like we talked about crime. This, this virus is trying to mutate to stay alive. And we have to be smarter than that. It's not comfortable. People don't like wearing masks. I understand that. It gives you cotton mouth. It gives me cotton mouth anyway. I definitely understand that. However, we are talking about our health. Think about our children as I spoke about before. Those children under twelve that cannot get vaccinated, wear your mask to keep your children safe. You know, I know our governor doesn't want to do it. I know, uh, people don't want, want to go back to where we were. But if you don't want to go back to where we were, we have to take the proper precautions and move forward in a smart, intelligent way. Understand that data shifts as things happen. No two days are the same. So we have to make sure that we are listening to the people who are watching this closely and following, um, what we're being guided to do.
Okay. Now listen to this. Um, the next thing we're gonna shift to is the city council. So over this last year, we've been in a situation where a lot of people lost their jobs. They had to stay home with their children, right? Um, they were on unemployment, but in the midst of that, by an eleven to four vote, I might add, the city council of Atlanta gave themselves a raise. As a matter of fact, they managed to give themselves a raise from sixty thousand dollars a year to seventy-two thousand dollars a year in the middle of a pandemic. I'm not here to say they deserved it or didn't deserve it. I'm here to ask the question. What would your position have been on making that move at that time?
Well, uh, for me, I think, uh, being of service is definitely, um, it's, it's an honor. I, I feel like, um, and from what I heard from some of their positioning is the amount of work it takes, it's not a part-time job. However, it's still considered a part-time job. So for me to do the increase, I would have wanted to see it become a full-time position with the increase, uh, opposed to staying a part-time job and just increasing the funding. Um, and, and the thing about this is, how can I say this?
Hey, this is on Unfiltered?
It is Unfiltered.
Politic it.
So, uh, we have to hold ourselves accountable to higher standards. Um, if Atlanta is going to become a world-class city, we have to have world-class leaders and we have to hold them accountable. So to me, a part-time job, I cannot agree with that being seventy-two thousand dollars. However, if it is a full-time job, I can see that. I believe, uh, you know, our social workers, um, our city workers, our teachers, all of them should be receiving more money. Atlanta is the highest-paid district in the state of Georgia and teachers start at forty-six thousand dollars. Um, I find that problematic because in the city of Atlanta, you can't live making forty-six thousand dollars. So how does that make sense that the place you serve, you don't make enough to live in?
That's good. And that's, that's an excellent point. And I, and I like the idea of it has to be a full-time job because here's the truth of the matter. Everyone's saying it's not part-time work, but most of them have another full-time, whole life, whole job while getting a second full-time salary for a job that's part-time, right? And so it's, to, to, to a lot of people, they're saying it's the timing. The time wasn't right while everyone else is serving, right? Um, and, and, and everyone else is trying to figure out what's going on. We're voting for a raise in the middle of a pandemic while unemployment is at a high. Um, I think that's the concern that people were making, but you're right. If it becomes a full-time job, then it says you can't do nothing else. So, and then you probably have to increase a little bit more, but that is a full-time salary for a part-time job. And it's an increase in the middle of, of a pandemic. So thank you for your answer, um, to that particular question. So you talked about, um, the labor and how adults and kids are, are competing for the same job, which brings me to the labor shortage. So, so that part I'm kind of not understanding right now in this moment. In the past I saw it, right, where people couldn't get jobs. But now everywhere we go, people are sending me pictures of, we don't have enough staff to serve you guys. So the wait is gonna be forty-five minutes, right? People are sending pictures of hiring immediately, like we don't even care about your criminal background, just come. We need workers because there's a labor shortage right now and there's an, an overwhelming amount of employment available. So how does that, how, how does that mesh with where we are on this side of the fact that, okay, well, crime's being committed because people don't have jobs, but we're in the middle of a labor shortage and there's a lot of jobs available. So what is happening in that?
So, um, that is, that is a great question and I'm glad you asked. Uh, so let me ask you this. Is it, uh, so if I make seven twenty-five an hour, times ten hours, that's what, uh, seventy, you know, seventy, seventy-seven dollars. But then I have to pay for a martyr pass to get back and forth to work and I have to pay for childcare. And I have to live. So once you dwindle down from that seven dollars, there's nothing left. So people are really asking, is it worth my time to show up to this job and make little to nothing? And still have to pay my bills? I still have to have childcare. I still have to have transportation. So we have to pay people a living wage and I understand people don't want to increase the pay, but literally servers at restaurant make two dollars and thirteen cent an hour. So if people aren't coming out to eat, that means I've spent eight hours. So I made what? Seventeen dollars, seventeen dollars? I mean, you, that, that's a reality that it costs me to come to work at this point. You know, and, and that's what people have to think about is if you want people to work, you have to pay them where they can survive. We just talked about how much it costs to live in Atlanta. So you want to keep them at the same price while the hu- housing costs are inflating. And these things are affecting people showing up. Childcare is so expensive. Some people are just staying at home and taking care of their kids, living off of one income, opposed to taking on the debt of the burden of going to work full-time, being exhausted when I get home and I have no money after transportation and childcare.
That is very, very good. And, and I gotta point out Christina Callwood is saying, and it's an excellent point, that um, people are deciding after this pandemic that their value is higher. Like, you know, after you've had some chance to sit on the sidelines and watch some other people, like you said, and you're like, nah, my, my value is worth more than seven dollars and twenty-five an hour. Because they realized how much money they were spending going to work. They realized how much money they were spending on childcare. It's an excellent question. And there are some companies out there who are offering more incentives, but as you were speaking, something else came to mind about the city of Atlanta and particularly in your district. And having to take the bus to work and things like that. Cause some of these jobs that pay money, you can't get there on martyr, but that's a whole other conversation. What is going on with the sidewalks? So we had this big old infrastructure bill passed or kind of halfway passed, um, federally recently. But I've been reading at all these conversations and hearing the different candidates for office talk about sidewalks. What you, what you talking about Willis? Like?
So, so that's a part of my public safety, um, platform. We have to have complete streets. We have to have complete sidewalks. So June twenty-ninth, in this district, um, I was T-boned. Our car was totaled in this district because the streets were not adequately, we didn't have adequate signs. We didn't have the adequate lines. A car ran a stop sign and just plowed right into the side of us. Now imagine if we were on a bike or imagine if we were walking and this happened. These are the things that we're talking about. When you look at some of the major, uh, thoroughfares through our neighborhood, from Ralph David Abernathy Cascade, um, even Liam White, they don't have adequate, uh, traffic calming devices. We don't have adequate crosswalks. We don't have street lights that work. All of these things contribute to public safety. In black and brown communities, you are, you have an eighty-five percent chance of being hit as a pedestrian. Eighty-five percent. That's ridiculously high and that has to do with having adequate sidewalks, being ADA accessible. Uh, there are people who, um, are in wheelchairs or, uh, you know, have different ability levels that can't even access sidewalks because they're not adequately formatted. These are things we have to think about holistically. One of the things I would do in my first hundred days is get with the community members and walk the streets of every community. So I could have eyes on those places where they don't have sidewalks. Or, um, you know, over in Mechanicsville where the bus stop is, the sidewalk is about two and a half feet. So literally it's just about this much space from the street and where you're standing, waiting for your bus. So if you have children or anything else waiting with you, that is completely unsafe. We really have to retool our communities or even when I think about Mosley Park, um, on Chickamauga. You know, that street leads directly to the Belt Line and there's not one sidewalk for people to walk on. So if you are walking or in a wheelchair, you're walking in the street to get back and forth. And that is not safe and that's not acceptable for a city.
It's amazing. And thank you, Christina just said, but they got bike lanes. So you got some areas got bike lanes. So you can ride your bike in the street, um, safely. But y'all ain't got sidewalks. Like, and people don't think about that as a public safety issue. But you know, it's, it's also an issue of worth and value. Like, do our kids deserve sidewalks? Like, do they deserve to be able to walk to and from safely? Or, or, or do we not care enough? So they just gotta walk on the edge of the street, right? And we tell our kids, south street, south street. But if you're walking that close to the street and a, a car just happens to look down at their phone and, and hijack the curb, right? Then, then this, then this amazingly horrible thing has happened because we didn't care enough to put simple things in place, right? And, and I hear Ms. Nixon is saying, we definitely need sidewalks in Mosley Park. And a lot of us take sidewalks for granted because we're like, what are you talking about? Everywhere we go with sidewalks. Like, nobody even uses our sidewalks. There's no footprints on them. Because everybody just gets in their car and drive around, but we got sidewalks. But in a city where most people are dependent on, on public transportation, you're telling me it's okay not to have sidewalks. Now let me say this. You are running against an incumbent. And by the way, I'm like, is everybody in Atlanta running? You are running against an incumbent who has been in office for twenty-eight years. Did they remove the sidewalks sometime during that time and that's why we don't have them? Or are we not fighting for sidewalks? And I'm just gonna lead at right where it is. So.
And Ms. Glass, who lives on Dargon Place, has asked for sidewalks since twenty-ten. Since twenty. She's seventy, what, seventy-six years old right now. So when you think about Ms. Glass during the pandemic, if she wanted to walk out of her house, she has to walk in the street to take a walk because she doesn't have sidewalks. That's not acceptable.
It was not acceptable. It's not acceptable at all. So, so here's the thing, is there just not money in the budget for sidewalks?
Well, um, sorry, that was laughable. No.
Money in the budget for the raise.
Well, the T-Spot money, uh, well, I got a mailer saying that eight million dollars worth of brick sidewalks were replaced in West End, historic West End proper. So we got eight million dollars worth of brick sidewalks replaced while there are people with no sidewalks.
So wait, I'm sorry. Did you say you got some sidewalks replaced? I mean, there were sidewalks there, but they wanted better sidewalks. So you got sidewalks replaced, but not sidewalks put in place?
Not just, not just sidewalks, but brick sidewalks. And, and, and I think that is something to look at where we have to spread equity throughout the district. So even when we talk about equity, um, there's some parts that get attention and some parts that are forgotten. And I think it's important that every part of the community is a part. Equity is something that I have, uh, that's been a part of my career since I started. Uh, you know, it's not about, you have to give the most to those who have the least. And this is why, because the crime that we're seeing in our communities stems from that. When you see a lack of opportunity, when you see a lack of investment, when you see lack of care to you and your community, wow, you can take a walk to a community who is getting all the resources and all the things that you see that are not happening in your community. There is a, a, a bit of anger that grows and resentment grows, which no, it's not the community's fault that's receiving those services. It's not that community. However, we have to be accountable to how we treat people and how. However, we have to be accountable to how we treat people and how things show up in the world that we're responsible for.
That is good. And you actually just walked right into one of the questions I got text. This question comes from Mr. Augustine, and he says ninety percent of crime is a crime of opportunity, and you just talked about that opportunity. He said, let's take away the opportunity to commit crime by being more vigilant in our neighborhoods as a community, by watching our neighbors' property like it's our own. When that happens, we will see a loss of crime or reduction in crime. No one's solution is going to solve the problem, but take away the opportunity to commit crime, and crime will disappear. And he is a former detective, so is very well-versed in the police department. And I want to talk about that opportunity to commit crime. It's not only just us watching out for each other as neighbors, you know, so how do we influence that change? I remember back in the day, I don't know if you remember this, I'm a little bit older than you, we used to have block parties. And, you know, we'd block off the ends of the street, and everybody would come out and celebrate with one another, and we knew each other's kids, and we would do that, right? So, one, you have to be able to increase the sense of community because what I'm hearing you say is there is even segregation within the community, okay? Segregation of services, segregation of values, segregation of work. So we're going to have to figure out how to do that. But then my next question to you is, how do you instill, or rather reinstate, trust in a people who feel violated by the police? How do you do that? Because everyone watches the news, but I'm actually more concerned about the stuff we don't even see on the news. The stuff that doesn't make the news, the profiling, that the kids who are beat up on the side of the street, the people who are harassed, right? So how do we do that? How do you bridge this gap between protect and serve, right? And the perception, and sometimes it's not a perception, it's a reality, that the police don't care about us?
And that is a great question. So there's no one, and I agree with the detective, there's no one smoking bullet that is going to change things. This is going to have to be progressively different. But what I do know is when you touch hearts, you change minds. And that's what we have to start thinking about. And that's why my slogan is moving the heart of the city forward. We have to start humanizing people and looking at people as people. Not only that, but when I talked about that and feeling of housing in communities, I think giving officers an opportunity to live in different communities. A lot of the housing that's available to officers are in the most blighted areas. And yes, we need police presence there, but at the same time, you think about yourself and your family. Are you going to up and move your child and your husband or your wife to the most blighted part of the city? And most people say, no. I have a friend who is an officer who actually has moved, and he's created community. He's able to see things from a different perspective. And I think being a part of communities helps you see the community as a whole. So that's one thing. National Night Out just passed us, August, the first Tuesday of every August is National Night Out. An opportunity for communities to meet who are policing their communities. You also meet the firefighters who work in your area and really bringing neighbors out to meet each other, really pushing. I think neighborhood organizations should have a small budget for that. Really engaging citizens in a way that will build community. We have to build in those things. We know a lot of our communities might not have the resources that they need to pull these things to pass, you know? That's why you see a difference in some of the Buckhead communities because they have resources. It's not that they're better people. It's not that they're smarter. They have resources, and they have access to resources. So we need to give people access to resources and connect the police, get back to community policing. And again, as I talked about a little bit earlier, really reinstating that community core and investing in it so that it's strong and we are getting people who are leaving the criminal justice system opposed to getting caught up in the criminal justice system.
Well said, well said, well said. Well, guys, I got to come back and get to some of y'all's questions, but before we do that, we are going to take a quick break to give away some money. So, guys, you guys know how we do. I'm going to start the timer. I want to see those numbers going up, one through one hundred. I have already received the number, and it's interesting that you sent it. I'm going to tell you about that in a minute. But I have already received the number for today from our guest, City of Atlanta Council candidate Larry Carter. So you guys know how we do. Go ahead and start putting your numbers in the chat, and I'm going to start a timer right now for you guys. So let's go. All right. It looks like we actually have three people who guessed the number. So let me tell you what's interesting. I have been, and actually, I'm going to say, there's a second part to this. Okay, so there are three of you, actually four. So Ms. Nixon has guessed the number eleven. Karen Geddes has guessed the number eleven. James Holmes has guessed the number eleven. This never happens. Number eleven. So there are four of you who have guessed the number eleven, and I need the four of you to drop a number in the box, one through ten, because I have the other number, and we will select it from there. But while they're doing that, I want you to answer this question. Where, and this is a question that came up earlier from, I believe, Ms. Ponton asked the question, where are the mental health facilities even located in Atlanta? Like, where do you even go to get mental health help in Atlanta?
So that is a great question. And so there's different facilities. And that's part of the problem is there is no one place for services. So when I talked about Red Hook a little bit earlier, and I use them as an example because it's kind of what Mayor Bottoms was pushing for with the Atlanta Detention Center, it's to create one building where you go for all of these services. So Community Court is in the same building that you get housing services, you get mental health services, you get drug abuse, counseling, all of that stuff housed in one place. And I feel like that's something that I want to advocate for, whether it's at the detention center or somewhere else in the city. We need to have one place where people can go to get all of these services that they need because a lot of times, people who are experiencing homelessness might need mental health care as well. And so really pulling those things together. But right now, a place you can go, I know until December thirtieth of this year, Families First on Joseph E. Lowry is offering free counseling services to community members with a grant that they have. So really helping people get access to different services. I'm sorry, oh, did you need to check their numbers? Oh, okay. Giving people different access to services that they need. But I think really housing them in one place is going to be the most helpful for our people when we're talking about. If you look at Built for Zero, which is an organization that works with cities and counties to get to zero homelessness, basically to end chronic homelessness altogether. There's twelve places who's ended chronic homelessness for veterans and about five in general throughout the United States. Really working in coalition and collaboration, bringing all these services that service together in one place so that these resources are not measured by what that individual is doing, but basically how we're affecting homelessness as a whole, if that makes sense.
It does. That's excellent, because my next question that someone asked was, what were your plans regarding homelessness? Which is something that you don't write into, come on over. And so, listen, the winner is actually going to be Karen Geddes. And thank you so much to everyone else. And Mr. Nixon, thank you, and welcome to the broadcast as well. So listen, for the past week, every time I looked at my watch, it was eight eleven. And eleven is eight eleven. And I got this morning, and I said, it's August eleventh. It's eight eleven. So then when you sent the eleven, I was like, today must be an amazing day, and it has been. And when you sent the eleven, I was like, oh, isn't that interesting? And then when all those people guessed it, I was like, uh-uh, let's go with the eight. So Karen, for the winner, I am going to be sending you a hundred dollars today. You know how we do it. You send me an email over to beblessed@bcright.com. And you can see that right up under my name right there. Let me make it a little bit bigger so you can CC it. Here we go, right there. So send me an email directly there and tell me if you want it in Cash App, if you want it in Bitcoin, if you want it in Apple Pay, whatever method, Google Pay, and I will make sure that we get that right out to you. So that being said, guys, we are at the top of the hour. So we have a few moments left. And with those few moments, I don't know if you guys have some last-minute questions or questions that I skipped, please go ahead and type it in the chat. But I'm going to give you an opportunity to talk to us about something that maybe we didn't get to touch on today that's on your heart, or just give us your closing thoughts on today.
Okay. And congratulations, Karen. Happy for you. I want to talk about a little bit inclusive development. So our area has seen development, but I feel like it's a pivotal point in the growth of Atlanta that we really need to have services that come to the community that service the existing community. You know, I know since 2009, we've asked for more access to grocery stores and choice of groceries. And since then, we've got no more grocery stores, but we've inherited three breweries and a distillery, a rock climbing gym. And those things are amazing, don't get me wrong. But what I'm saying is, what is servicing the community is what we need. So one of my plans with inclusive development is to get with the community, find the top twenty retailers, take the census demographic data that's coming out from the 2020 census, look at our land use, and really create a plan and shop it to the retailers the community wants to see. Bringing in those people to our community, showing them the value that's here. We have to brand ourselves and market ourselves. That's one thing that we did do in Ashwood Heights, is branded ourselves, and it garnered us respect because we were able to tell people who we were instead of people telling us who we were. And that's what I want to do for the community. I'm running for Atlanta City Council District Forward to create healthy communities for all families in the district. And that's why I am asking for your vote. If you have more questions for me, you can come see me at Edgewood Pizza in West End. It just opened here in West End, so this is a black-owned business that has come to our community. So I definitely want to make sure that we are supporting the businesses that come to our community. And I'll buy you a slice of pizza, and we can talk about politics.
Where will you be there?
At seven PM tomorrow, Thursday, August twelfth at seven PM. If you need more information, you can follow me on Instagram at LarryCarterATL. My website is LarryCarterMovingForward.com. You can read about my policies. You can learn more about what I'm doing. And please, please, to win campaigns, it does take money. So I am asking people to donate what you can, share it with friends. If you have people that you want to introduce me to or have me talk to, please reach out, and I will definitely come and have this conversation face-to-face and answer any of your questions that haven't been met. And thank you for your time, and thank you for having me. I appreciate it.
Okay, well, that being said, this has been an amazing show. You guys, make sure that you are liking and sharing. Press that like, like, like so that this gets distributed to more people. But in addition to that, you guys know people who live in and outside the city of Atlanta because the truth of the matter is what happens in Atlanta affects Fayetteville, affects Snellville, because we all go to Atlanta, whether it's to shop, whether it's to drive through there, if you got to stop and get gas, whatever it is, we use those facilities. So it impact us. So make sure that you are sharing this broadcast so that they can hear live from one of the candidates from questions that are on the hearts of the people. Because why? Because we want a better republic. And the only way to get a better republic is to make sure that you remember that we are the gatekeeper. So Larry, thank you so much for being here with us. You guys, who wants to go for a slice of pizza tomorrow night? So thank you so much for being here. I'm going to send you to the green room so I can tell the callers bye. But before I go, I would be remiss if I did not do this because I missed it, and I got to acknowledge it on today, I have to say a very happy birthday to a faithful listener of Unfiltered. That is not the cutest baby I've ever seen in my life. Happy birthday to Tyson, who is all the way out there in Tucson, Arizona, tuning in. Happy belated birthday. Her birthday was yesterday. So we definitely want to wish her the best and say happy birthday to her. But you guys, you know how we do. Until next time, thank you, guys, for tuning in. Be blessed, share the broadcast, and stay woke. Okay, and Dream's coming. She's going to come get some pizza tomorrow, so we'll see you tomorrow. Stay blessed, guys. Stay woke. Love you, guys. Bye-bye.